This meeting to order at 7:06 on August the 18th, 2020. And I'd like to mention that we did have an executive session prior to this meeting. And I would like to turn it over to Kyle Willis for the the flag salute invocation.
I assume we do not have a flag anywhere nearby?
Close your eyes and imagine one.
All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
Under God.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Hey, give me a second on the logging in. I can't even get the stupid.
That's a bad picture, dude.
Hold on. What is it? Too close to my nose?
I'm going to lose.
Give me a second. I can't get into my computer, so I'm doing this from my phone. Sorry. If you hear a lot of clicking. All right.
We're all taking pictures of your picture on the on the computer to show you.
Good. Council President Papaleo.
Present.
Councilman Kyle Willis.
Present.
Councilwoman Lee Daley. Councilwoman Lee Daley.
Girl.
She froze.
Lee!
You're muted, Lee.
She's sending me something. She sent me this picture of whatever gross thing. All right, well, we'll keep going for now. We'll get back to her. Councilman Nick Waters.
Present.
Councilwoman Melinda Isaac.
Present.
Councilman Jason McWiggin.
Here.
Councilman Robert Ruskowski.
Here.
Mayor Bob Fry. He is absent currently. Alex.
Present.
And I'm here. Lee, I know you're here, so. Lou.
Lee's coming back in.
All right, so I'd like to move along to the engineers' report. Everybody, if you could, while Lisa has the floor, mute your mute your function on your.
We do have audience.
Joe, we have one audience comment.
Oh, forgive me. I'll roll that back. Go ahead and go ahead and read those into the into the record, Andrew.
Well, I'm bringing it up now. This thing really is not great. Give me a moment. All right. So this is regarding parking permits. Andrew, please make parking permit ordinance across the board in Fallcroft. We also have issues with parking in Old Fallcroft. Also, 441 Crotter finally mowed their meadow, so you can take that property off the list. Also, I told Joe about an above ground pool that is at least four feet deep at 1700 Warwick, placed on the side yard without any fencing. Joe said they were fined. That was two weeks ago, and the pool is still there. This is a drowning hazard for any children wondering why. Sincerely, Dawn Andonian, 537 Crotter Avenue, Fallcroft, Pennsylvania. And I'd like to note that the pool at Warwick, they paid for all the relevant permitting that they need. And that had been resolved already. 441 Crotter, you know, we've been doing a decent amount of tacking lately. That's been hit. Beyond that, I.
Is there fencing going in because they do require fencing?
Supposedly. I know we're on it.
Okay. I mean, I want to note that if they're if they're watching this meeting for a fraction of the cost that would have cost to maintain a pool, their swim club a block away from them. But of course, they're, you know, that's their that's their choice, and I respect it, but they do have to have all the proper permitting. So are there any more items of audience participation? Anything, any more audience participation? All right, moving on to the engineers' report. Sorry for stopping you there, Lisa initially.
I never got started, so it won't matter.
All right, just make sure everybody's. Go ahead, make sure everybody's muted. We're going to turn it over to you, Lisa.
Okay, you do have a copy of my report, I hope. Just a couple things I spoke to or now let them know that we have approved their proposal for the sidewalk at the entrances to the stairs at the train station. Tony is not expecting to be able to get there until the end of September. So I just wanted to advise of that. We also received bids for the 2020 road program, and we are recommending an award to AF Damon. There were six bids. Damon was at low bid of $93,341. The high bid was at $111,210.50. So we were we were rather punched. It was it was a rather close bid, which is a good thing. We're going to recommend that that award to AF Damon. We also took bids for the village for the other, the half lane that we would have to do once PICO completes their work. And that was that was bid out at low price of $309,774. So I think if we're looking at budgeting next year, it should be somewhere around $350,000 that we would budget for the the other portion of lane or the one lane that we would have to do as part of the PICO restoration. Otherwise, I can report general progress. Have not heard anything from from Braun Properties. Safe Store, again, we're waiting on FEMA. They were supposed to have a new package over to us for this meeting. As a matter of fact, they were going to be looking for a final approval this evening. However, we never received the package. I'm hoping that it's not somewhere where we haven't seen it as of as of yet. Typically, Matt Curse would send an electronic copy over to us. We did not see that. We will need to act on that next month unless we get an extension of time. So that will be on the agenda next month. Right now, the plans are such that that we could approve it with the third party requirements being met in order to record the plans. That would be that would be FEMA, Penn Dot, or excuse me, they have Penn Dot, FEMA, DEP, and and the MPDES permit. So just to give you an update on that, you do have as part of the of the building, the municipal complex project, you do have a resolution, I believe, on your agenda this evening. I don't have a copy of the agenda. I don't receive one, so I I'm going by what I hope is on the agenda. That will be acted on later on in the meeting, I assume. That is for your connections to the sanitary sewer system. So we'll have to do that this evening, and that's all I have unless anyone has any questions.
Do we need a special resolution for that? Alex, is everything that needs to be specified in Jason's segment? Do we need to do a special resolution for the sanitary sewer thing?
Yeah, we're sent over. There was a form from DEP that you're supposed to use, but I took it and spun it into, you know, full cross format and all that. So it's there. It's ready to go.
I have a quick question, but it's more for Andrew and Alex. Lisa had mentioned the sidewalk work along the stair, I mean, stairwell work. Is that what I have a motion here for at the top of my list?
Let me take a look.
I believe that's correct, Lisa, the the work at the at the train station. That's the the work that, and I apologize if I forget your employee's name, that we're voting to approve tonight by the train station?
Yes.
All right.
So that didn't get approved. I have in my file that we approved that last week, last month. That was the one that I told you we needed to do sooner than later?
Yes.
I thought we had gotten the approval last month, so I apologize that I kind of jumped the gun then if it's on the agenda for this evening, but I thought I thought you acted on it as council last month.
I had it on as an action item that I was told at our committee meeting on August 4th that it needed to be on the agenda for this meeting so the council could motion to approve the work.
Okay.
So is it being completed by you by Katanha Engineering, or is it someone other than Katanha Engineering?
Oh, it's not Katanha Engineering. Yeah, no, it's a Ernell Construction. Given us given us the proposal quite a while ago.
Okay, good.
To approve Ernell Construction. Okay, thank you.
All right, Lisa, is that everything?
Oh, one other thing, unless it may be that the chairman of the building committee might have on their on his report concerning the MPDES.
You know what, Lisa, why don't you do it because he just sent that email this afternoon?
Okay, um, we did receive the MPDES approval for water off of a construction site, so we're good to go as far as the the MPDES and the erosion controls. That's all.
All right, all right. So moving on to public finance and administration, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve he collects contracts for the business privileged tax collection in the borough of Fallcroft.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, so is that correct? If I'm wrong, is that a six to one vote? Okay, so we have that correct. We have the correct breakdown there. So I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Borough Manager Andrew Hayman as the Borough's Right to Know Officer.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Like the motion to approve the renewal of signal service. I'm sorry, I'd like to entertain. I'm sorry, someone's trying to speak.
Who made that motion for the to appoint me to right to know and who seconded it?
I moved.
That was me. Who was it? I said it. I don't know.
Did you motion or did you second? Okay, so we've got Kyle who motioned and Nick who seconded.
All right, got it. Thank you. Sorry about that. Continue.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the renewal of signal services contract with the borough.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve an attendance policy for borough employees.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that attendance policy? Do we approve the attendance policy tonight? Because I did everybody see a copy of it? Yes, okay. All right. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve a social media policy for borough employees.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, hold on. Councilman McWiggin is we've lost his signal. Aye. Hang on. Jason, is that you?
That is me.
All right, where did we lose you? What was the last thing you voted on?
I voted yes for the right to know officer.
Okay. All right, so Alex, what do we do here? Do we? I mean, the other two measures, three measures passed.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, not to say that your vote doesn't matter, Jason, but in this context, they passed. Jason, just ask him what his vote is for those remaining motions that he missed, and then you can reflect the minutes to.
All right, so there was there was a motion, Jason, to approve the renewal of signal services contract?
I'm in the affirmative of those all three motions.
Okay. All right. So moving on, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the July 7th council, sorry, the July 7th committee and July 21st council meetings.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve a tentative expense of $500 to create and print informational flyers to distribute to residents.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. President, what's this for?
Kyle, if you'd like to, Kyle and Andrew, if you'd like to explain this for Councilman McWiggin.
Andrew, can you give the details of specifically what's there?
Yeah, so this is a printing of informational flyers for council members. I was asked by Councilman Willis to to draw up a draft. It's in the email that went out last Wednesday. It's just basically information about some of the events that we've done and giving people opportunity to sign up for emails or to send a letter to the borough if they have a complaint or an issue and sort of talking about some of the services we provide. It's not going to be super complicated, and it's going to be a small printing. I say $500 because we can authorize more if council members. It's not going to be a mailer. It's not going out to all residents. If council members chose to get more of them because they were finding it very successful going door to door, talking to residents. But again, anybody, you know, that wants it can have it.
So my specific concern was mostly centered around our current avenues of communication hit a small percentage of our actual residents. And so when we advertise, say, we're giving away food over Facebook and the phone banking, there are a number of residents who are not clued into those. And so my thought is to get them into those communication pathways so that more of our residents will know and have access to those types of events and thoughts. That was my main kind of premise behind this. Does that make sense?
How how are you going to identify those residents?
So my main thought, and I mean, this was a bit earlier before now, was that I was going to use my time and I was just going to go and door to door. I mean, the right now, we can't identify them, so best case scenario is to just try to hit all of them and catch as many as you can.
Well, I mean, just curious, is there a reason why you don't want to mail them?
I mean, mailing them's fine. I didn't. If that's what we want to do, I was willing to go door to door when it was summer and I had nothing else to do with my time because I'm a teacher. But now that I'm about to start teaching again, I wouldn't mind mailing them instead of doing it the other way.
Yeah, and I mean, given COVID too, Kyle, I don't.
That was another thought as well.
I mean, that presents a risk to you and to or you might be presenting a risk to a resident. And I would actually just. How much was the last mailing, Andrew?
Whoop, sorry, I think it was about $2,500. Something like that, $2,700 maybe.
Okay.
One thing I will note, and obviously, again, I really don't have an opinion here particularly, but, you know, the idea was to have a more personal connection, one on one, and let people know that this stuff's actually happening. Doesn't have to happen this way. We had done the mailer. I don't know that there was a radical increase in participation in events because of it. I do think it answered some questions about bulk trash, things of that nature, but I don't actually think it did a ton beyond that. So any council member could go out, even a council member, you know, maybe currently between jobs. If there's anybody on here, I don't know. But, you know, anybody, or I could do it. I mean, if we have some free time in the borough, not that I anticipate that, I could even go door to door. I'm not. I don't mind it. Socially distancing, face masks, everything required. But anyway, up to you.
Um. I mean, it just seemed.
Knocking on doors right now, do they?
What's that, Jason?
Are people big fans of people knocking on their doors right now? I mean, you know?
I mean, that I mean, that's I mean, my concern is like, I mean, if I can't have an in-person meeting with my council, why am I going to be banging on 100 doors a day? You know what I mean? You know what I'm saying? Like, it just the the two things don't dovetail. I don't know. I would rather mail it if we're going to do.
I think mailing I think mailing right now is the best option.
Yeah.
Because I have to agree with Joe. If we're not meeting in person, why should we be going door to door?
Right.
And I would say not to mail it, not to do it at all until we think it out a little bit better. Mailing it is going to end up going right where these other people have lost the last few. There's still people constantly posting about the bulk trash. We sent out a mailer explaining the bulk trash, and people are still saying, I called for bulk trash or, you know, when is bulk trash coming or whatever? So the mailers may catch a few, but Kyle's idea was to actually go and talk to these people who don't have these avenues. So maybe we just hold off a little bit on it. Maybe we don't have any money right now. We just sent out a flyer. We just spent a plenty of money on it.
Yeah.
And maybe we wait to go fishing again in the spring.
I'd like to make motion to table this.
Yeah, I think. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of table in the motion?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Andrew, just make sure that because the motion was tabled, that it absolutely has to be on the agenda for September's meeting.
Yeah, I was trying to ask that. So what will be on the agenda for the September committee meeting?
Yep.
We could either.
Not the committee meeting, the general vote. So the general meeting is September.
Okay.
If it's tabled, it absolutely has to be reopened at the following meeting.
All right. What's the punishment? What's the punishment for not reopening it? Do we go to jail?
Yes.
Free rent, three hots and a cop. Okay, so I'd like to also move on. So we've tabled that for next meeting. I'd like to discuss borough code enforcement updates and online payment for any residents who may be watching or any council members that are already aware of this. We recently commissioned or recommissioned a police vehicle, which was repurposed for code enforcement. You've probably seen that traveling the borough streets. And in the past week or two, we have really honed in on code enforcement aggressively, not unfairly, but things that had been overlooked and 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 you know, we were lenient with before, you know, code enforcement is on the beat, and they are to the letter of the law enforcing code. Andrew, do you have anything to add with that?
Just to clarify, I know that Councilwoman Daley had brought this to my attention and asked if this be included. This was the idea was to include a website updates with how many tickets have been written and written. My idea was to have that be under, you know, perhaps the the finance director's report. I don't think we want to be going into details about individuals, repeat offenders, personal items. I don't want to talk about that, but if if I then Alex, you know, if there's an issue here, feel free to jump in. But I understood her idea to be that we would we would keep these updates on the websites that we could direct residents to show that we are, in fact, having tickets be written. How many fines were written, for example? I understand that we've written over 150 fines since the Friday before last.
Yeah, that was my point. I got into a long, long conversation with a few residents on concerns citizens of Fallcroft. And the go to for every single one of them was if you find the people, it will fix the problem. And what they don't understand, and Jason, you probably can attest to this, is that we are finding the people and it doesn't fix the problem. So then their suggestion was to then litigate, which costs the borough a ton of money and still does not fix the problem. So my thought process, and I bounced it off Kyle, was to have a report so that they can see that people are indeed being fined. Whether it's, you know, 150 tickets were written this week and, you know, I don't even know how to go about it, but the general idea is that we would have some kind of way you could click on the website and say, well, they wrote out 642 tickets in the past three months or whatever it is. Even if it's a annual tally or whatever it is or monthly, however, but so that people can see that we are, in fact, writing tickets.
I don't think it has to come from the finance director. I mean, Andrew, do you have? Is there a borough manager's report on the website?
No, the idea was that since that employee works under there now, I figured that would be relevant. That information might be more readily available. I really only have what has been sent to me since last Friday.
All right, well, let's find a way to to get that publicized, whether we put it under a council presence, I mean, whatever whatever report we have up there. I mean, we could find a way to put it in so people could see that it's happening. Lee, I do think it's a fair point because people, there's a whole angle of this that people don't see. And, you know, with courts being closed, anything that might have been litigated in a much more expedited manner is not. It's not happening the way that it used to happen. So, you know, these things are kind of floating around in limbo. So I it is important that the residents see and understand that the that we're now on the ball in terms of executing with strictly executing the, you know, our code enforcement role. And it's important that they see that. I do think that we should preserve people's anonymity. I don't think we should publish who got a fine for what.
But it will also give us a way to look back and see when we've let off the brake and when we have it and when we're not not doing it enough or not doing or we're overdoing it. I don't know my words here. But I think it would be good for us to be able to look back and see.
Right.
Andrew said it was we were not doing it for a little bit there because of COVID-19. Now we're getting a little bit more aggressive, but we can make sure that we don't have patterns created. You know what I mean? That we're not aggressively going after people and then stopping and then having to get aggressive again, that we're just consistent. And, you know, if you're breaking the rules in May and you're breaking the rules in November, we're still finding people, and it could be easily seen, and we can actually make sure that we're holding ourselves to that same standard.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a good idea. So we'll get to work on that. Andrew, if you could just piece that together and find a way. That would be great. I'm going to go ahead and are we free to move on from this?
Alex, is there any concerns, anything that we should look out for here, or are we clear sailing?
I mean, there's nothing illegal about what you guys are doing. It's akin essentially to publishing, you know, crime statistics report or something along those lines. You can certainly go the extra route. I mean, most municipalities will just state, you know, their enforcement numbers in a report during a committee meeting or their general meeting. But if you want to post that information on the website, you're more than welcome to. I would just caution, you know, to use anonymity for your residents, you know, not to say Joe Smith has been fined 17 times at this address for these violations. Because ultimately, if the borough has to file lien or has to pursue litigation, then you're handcuffing yourself in that situation.
All right, very good. I'm going to turn it over to Public Works Committee, Councilman Willis, for his his portion.
All right, so first item is I'd like to motion to approve Ernell Construction to complete the proposed work along Primus Avenue at both stairwells heading down the train station.
Second.
All right. Motion's on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, second item here is we were able to receive all of the necessary quotes for bulk trash pickup that we would need to move forward using the phone bid. So at this point, I kind of wanted to, before I made any motion, to just kind of state what the idea here is. Currently, obviously, we are single staffed in the highways department, so we're not really able to do bulk trash pickup. So until such time as we are have the capacity to do that, we would like to, instead of having a dumpster, that people just put things next to the dumpster rather than in it, we would like to contract out for that service. I would, and I think we should do this on a month to month basis. Every month, this be on the docket saying, are we continuing or are we getting going back to in-house? So this is not a, you know, for X number of months, this is every month we sit down in our voting meeting and say, we're ending it at the end of this month or what however we want to go forward with that. H&amp;H was the lowest bid, if I am correct, Andrew. Yes?
Yes, H&amp;H came in about $100 lower than the other bid, yes.
And so they currently do our regular trash pickup. They would be adding the bulk trash pickup service to that on Wednesdays. Correct, Andrew?
So it'll work much like we did previously. People will call in not more than three items, not more than twice a year, and they'll call into the borough, not more than 14 households every Wednesday. That list will be sent over to H&amp;H right on Tuesday nights, and then will be used by H&amp;H to pick up from those 14 households. So same as we did it before when it was in-house, but it'll be through that.
Okay.
Question?
Yeah.
And this is something that I don't think anybody's thought of yet. The borough in the past 10 years has not kept up on requiring residents to properly post their addresses behind their homes. The highway department, who previously did bulk trash, was aware of how to count. The highway department, who previously did bulk trash, was aware of how to count what houses were where. They could piece it together and find out what bulk trash was out and who, do you know what I mean? So that might present a problem and that, that H and H might not be able to positively identify between two trash heaps, which one was on the list. So I just want to be-
Oh, I, I will note that, and while I agree with you, that remember this is the same company we currently contract for trash pickup. They're likely using the same employees for that we currently go into the borough, not definitely, but in many cases will be. Uh, and, and so hopefully they will also understand that.
And I think we do have somewhere in our code, I don't know if it's, if it's still valid, but residents are supposed to have their address posted on both the front and rears of their home. Am I correct? Is that in code? Can anybody vouch for that?
It was years ago, Joe, as far as I remember.
And I don't remember it ever being repealed. So Andrew, um, pass that along to the code department. That's gonna be more work for them. They need to start posting their addresses correctly on the front and rear of their home.
Got it. I will.
Alright, does anyone have any other questions about this? I know this is one we've brought up a couple of times, so I wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
Yep, I'm good.
Alright, uh, then I would like to make a motion to accept the quote from H and H for temporary ba-, bulk trash pickup on a month-to-month basis.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, uh, last uh, item. Uh, I would like to make a motion to hire Sean Payne at a rate of thirty-five dollars an hour uh, the highway department.
Sorry.
Alright, motion's on the floor and has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations, uh, Sean Payne.
And that is all I have.
Alright, moving on to public safety. Councilman Ruskowski.
Motion to approve the police chief's report for month of July, twenty twenty.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve a fire marshal's report for July, twenty twenty.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve the fire chief's report for month of July, twenty twenty.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, that motion carries unanimously. I'm sorry, any opposed? Forgive me. No, no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Sorry. Uh, I'd like to turn that over to, turn this over to Public Health and Literacy Councilwoman Isaac. Uh, Councilwoman Isaac?
No report.
Uh, what about that, wasn't there something about the sign, the library sign?
Oh, yes. I just told, she just wanted to know if there was a TBA on that. But I told her today after I spoke with you, Joe, that it's all has to do with COVID and that we were aware.
Yes, I believe we, it was, was one of those things that we had talked about and that we were ready to move on before we got hit with COVID. And I think it's just sort of since slipped through the cracks. Andrew, do you recall what we were doing with the library sign?
Nah, man, slipped through the cracks. I'd have to take the look and see. I, I don't remember offhand. Something like that.
Yeah, let's sift through records and see what we can find, what, what was determined of anything and get that on the agenda for next month so we can, we can get back up to, to speed on that. Can you put that on the agenda for next month? Andrew?
Sorry, I'm making a note of that action. Uh, yeah, I'll put it on, I'll put it on the agenda. What I will say is that I, I think it's something that I could just look into now and if it's an action we already took, maybe we can just move forward. We'll see what it is.
Yeah, we'll do that then. But go ahead and do that. That's, that's the way to go. Alright, uh, on to uh, municipal planning and zoning. Councilman Waters.
No new business to discuss.
Alright, on to uh, public parks and recreation. Councilwoman Daly.
No new business.
Alright, um, uh, here's the good stuff. Moving on to municipal legislation. Councilman McGuigan.
Motion to approve a resolution for D E P Act five thirty-seven, plan revision for new land development.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion carries unanimously.
Alright, motion accepted a bank loan proposal in the amount of four million, six hundred ninety thousand dollars for the purpose of the construction of a new borough hall, police station and community center.
Seconded.
Alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the borough of Fallcroft to borrow loan monies for the construction of a new borough hall.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Fantastic. Motion to approve an ordinance regulating the use of fireworks within the borough of Fallcroft. Now, I will say this before we get a second, that the last three motions, huge, will probably get more of a reaction from this one.
Yeah, right. Actually, before we, we get onto this one, are we uh, are we able to set a ground, like a, a date to break ground now?
Joe, what we have to do is have a pre-construction meeting. Um, that might even want to be advertised where all members of council are present along with all the vendors. Um, to make sure that our, our communit-, lines of communication are open, everybody has what they need to get started. And then uh, pick a date of a groundbreaking where everyone can be in attendance to kind of coordinate that with our other elected officials.
Okay. Alright, um, yeah, I think uh, that sounds good to me. Let's get that meeting. Andrew, work with Jason to schedule that meeting. And um, this is groundbreaking. This is, I mean, those three actions were huge tonight and this is uh, we're, we're moving along. So yeah, just make sure you and, Jason, you and Andrew work together on scheduling that meeting. We gotta get that done as quick as possible. I want to get those shovels in the ground as soon as we can.
Looking forward to it.
Cool. Alright.
I second the motion on the table.
Alright, so uh, there isn't a motion on the table yet, I don't think. Is there?
He moved motion for the fireworks and I-
Oh, okay, we, you did, that's correct. Forgive me. Alright, so uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve an ordinance repealing chapter nine twenty-seven of the Fallcroft Borough Code of ordinance entitled disorderly housing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
No further business.
Alright, very good. Very good. Okay, alright, so we are moving on to, um, so that really, the new construction committee, I think we did it all under municipal legislation, but I'd like to give the floor over to Councilman McGuigan for him, if he have anything to say about, um, about what's going on.
No, just that uh, I think Joe would um, join in and say that this is something that I, I think when Joe had his first term of council was discussed and every single step we get to move closer. I mean, we're talking about going on twelve years now, trying to get this stuff. So this is a, this is a huge endeavor and uh, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, it's exciting. It's exciting. That's, I just can't believe it's actually gonna happen. You know, it's, it's, it's great news. So without further ado, I'm gonna turn over the police chief for the police chief's report. Um, Chief, are you with us still?
Yes, I'm still with you guys. I appreciate it. Thank you, Council President. Um, obviously, I have in front of me is the Fallcroft Police Department Activity Report showing you everything that's been going on. Um, we have, are getting a lot of complaints on parking and ever since the borough ordinance, we are enforcing that um, more often with the parking as far as with the expired and everything like that. As far as the uh, borough ordinance for the marijuana, as of right now, in the last month, we have four uh, citations uh, that were given out for that. Um, so we have that. I'd like to also um, let you know about the fire from last night. Um, nobody was hurt. The dogs are okay. Um, I was just told by waiting on um, hold here with you guys that he, um, the guy was actually taken um, from the uh, hospital to the crisis center right now and admitted into the crisis center. And they will be contacting us back when he is going to be released so we could place him under arrest for arson and other um, offenses. Uh, another note uh, that I want to go to, I want to thank you so much for the um, with the new police station and the borough hall and the community center for the, for the residents. I think it's gonna be a great thing. As well as uh, we have a juvenile in town and I talked to Andrew about this in a little, a little while ago, um, during the week, that she wants to have a Black Lives Matter protest march um, coming uh, this, either August twenty-fourth or August twenty-ninth. Um, the date is, we're, we're going back and forth with that. Right now, uh, with this juvenile, um, and also between one and four um, is the hours. Um, the route she wants to take is almost like a um, three-mile route and it would take us into Glen Olden. Um, I tried to bring it back down to a, a, a lower mileage route and, and less busier streets. But now she wants to be on Chester Pike, which is the major state highway. Um, so I wanted to bring it up to council so you guys know exactly what's going on and what your feelings are with it. And um, I told her that I would get back to her tomorrow because we had this uh, meeting tonight so I can get an accurate account of where the borough lies with this whole thing. I did get in contact with um, Glen Olden Police Chief Jay Kelly um, about this and uh, he is aware of it as well.
Right, um, I mean, you know, I, I, I have no issue with it. I mean, I, I think, you know, the, my experience with the protests here in Delaware County is that the protesters seem largely peaceful. I mean, we, we see images coming through the news of the stuff that happened in the city a few months back and, and it, and I think we, you know, we immediately assume that that's what we could, we should expect and I'm not necessarily sure that that's the case. Um, I, I, I'm fine with it. Um,
What happened with Ridley? What about Ridley?
Um,
That's what I was gonna say. What about Ridley? Um, don't those dates seem to me like it's a Monday? And we also have to think about people who work and coming back from work. We don't want any protesters getting hurt and we don't want any, because of road rage or something like that, if there's traffic guiding down. I think if we were going to do something like that, I think it's wonderful that a juvenile wants to do something like this. Um, cause yes, not only do Black Lives Matter, but all lives matter. And um, I think that a weekend might be better for her to, to do that as far as um, that type of a protest than during the week.
Yeah, the two days-
Use someone like, I, okay, use someone that's leaving work like at three o'clock. All they want to do is get home and if there's traffic because of this protest that are stopping, you know what I mean? You're delaying people from getting home and things like that where on the weekend, people are usually out and about because, you know, they're just out and about. They're not worried so much about going to work, things like that. Where they might be a little bit more or less um, upset about protesting, blocking traffic or stopping traffic. That's just my view. I could be wrong, but that's just my thinking, that a weekend might be a better date for her to do that.
Well, the first date that we have is August twenty-fourth, which is a Monday. But now she's changed that we, and, and with this one, with this protest compared to Glen Olden, Ridley and Collingdale that I know of, she is very uh, we're going back and forth, so we're talking. So there is communication. So the other ones, there was no real communication. So, but there is communication with this one. The only other thing that I can say is the one is, is the, the second type date that she gave me that I think she wants is the twenty-ninth, which is a Saturday. Um, and again, it's between one and four, but she's looking to do, I, I did the, I did the route she wants to do and it, and it's three miles. So I don't know if that's, if you think that's okay, or I tried to cut it down, um, but she is reluctant to, because she wants to be on Chester Pike. I can go over the, I'll go over the route with you so you can hear this. So it's, she wants to start at the library, then-
Fallcroft Library?
The Fallcroft Library and then go down to Fallcroft Avenue, make a left at Granger's and the Pacific Pride there. Follow that up to Elmwood, then take Elm, make a left on Elmwood to Primus Avenue. Make a right on Primus Avenue to Oak Lane, to Chester Pike. Make a left on Chester Pike. Now we'll be in Glen Olden from Chester Pike until Glen Olden Avenue. And then make a left on Glen Olden Avenue and follow that down to Delmar Drive. And then make a left on Delmar and follow that back to the library. That is roughly three miles. The route that I gave her secondly was the same route except for uh, library to Fallcroft, Fallcroft to Elmwood, Elmwood to Glen Olden Avenue, taking Chester Pike out of it. And then down to Delmar and back to the library, where she wants to get Chester Pike. So I was thinking about tomorrow going back with her a little bit and seeing if it works or not, but I don't know if it would. There's a couple of different routes of maybe taking it from library to Fallcroft Avenue to Elmwood. The Primus, Primus to Oak to Chester Pike, make a left and then make another left on Ashland. Um, and bring it down to Ashland and then make the left right at the library. That would cut, that would cut a lot of the, all the stuff in Glen Olden out and off of Chester Pike. I just don't know um, how, how she would react to that or whatever else. I'm just, I'm just looking to cut it down a little bit on the major highways. But it's up to you, Council. If you think that it's, it's fine with three miles, then it's three miles.
Chief, did you explain to her, I mean, I know her. She's one of my, my daughter's friends growing up. Did you explain to her that it's not about not wanting to disrupt traffic, but it's about the safety? Because those, Primus Avenue is sometimes thought of as a raceway and Chester Pike often is a raceway. Um, so maybe if you tell her that it's not about not, I mean, protesters are supposed to cause traffic. They're supposed to cause interruption and disruption. But maybe if it's more about safety to her, um, I would anticipate there's probably gonna be a lot of young folks and you don't want them, you know, you don't want someone passing and, and, and being stupid and hitting somebody. So the less she's on Chester Pike, what I think is probably better. Um, and maybe presenting it in that way is that it's not about, we're fine with the disruption. It, it's protests. It's gonna be disruption.
I mean, I would be even be okay with if like, if we shorten the route on Chester Pike and they, they could stop at a corner on Chester Pike for a brief rally before they return to the library so they could get the exposure on a major highway without, you know, the, the-
That bend, that going into that bend, there's been a, quite a few
Yes, there has.
Hits of, of young people. That would be my concern as a mother. Um, is that, that, that area of right there is super accident prone. There's a little bit of a bend in the road. Um, I know quite a few families who've lost children crossing that part of the road and it would just make your job more difficult. That would be my concern. Um, that part of Chester Pike, I know it's in Glen Olden, but that Chester part of Chester Pike is, is, is-
It's treacherous.
It's scary. Yeah. Not about not having attention and all that. It's more to me about the safety and, and, and having you guys have to worry about their safety uh, on that little bit of strip there.
Well, maybe I can get her to the point, if I get her to go from Fallcroft Avenue to Elmwood and then Elmwood or, yeah, Fallcroft or Delmar to Fallcroft to Elmwood to Primus and bring her up to Chester Pike and bring her back in at Ashland. And then once I get back over to Elmwood, make that right and go up to Glen Olden Avenue and then make it longer down Delmar Drive. Maybe that will suffice that and she gets her exposure because that was her main thing of, excuse me, getting the exposure, exposure on a state highway. You know, we're really not supposed to block state highways. It's actually legal to, to, to block the state highway. They're supposed to be walking on the sidewalks, but we're just trying to make it work. I did suggest to her that we would have a police car in the front. We'd have police car in the back. We'd have police cars all around and also probably um, some officers that are walking in plain clothes with them. And also probably um some officers that are walking in plain clothes with them, but have vests and everything else on and uh walking around so that there's no problems. Um, so that, we're not worried about when, we're not, we're not overly worried about that. We're concerned, but we're not over, we're gonna be there. We're not leaving them out to dry. It's more of a a safety concern, which I did tell her about. That's the reason for that. I told her about Mondays. I think you're just gonna, you're gonna get people from work. Saturdays, you're probably gonna make it a lot, a lot more uh people in your march and it'll be a lot safer, I believe, on a Saturday or Sunday.
So it's still up in the air. On this, uh, first off, uh, I want to commend the heart to put this protest together. And then the maturity to actually go back and forth and negotiate uh with the police department to make sure that the folks that march uh are safe. I think that's a, that's a job well done by someone who's not even legally an adult yet. Kudos.
Definitely.
Yeah, that's definitely a leader in the making for sure. Yeah, I agree, Jason. That's I, that's right. It's, she's definitely a leader in the making. We'll be keeping our eye on her.
He's a fantastic, she's a fantastic kid. I've had interactions with her. Fantastic kid, fantastic family.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm 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 fine with it. See if we can reduce the the exposure on Chester Pike just because of the safety uh reasons. I mean, I would be even willing to compromise, like I said, if if they wanted to have a small rally on like maybe one half of the road there at Chester Pike for a couple of minutes before they 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 continue their or complete their march. Um, if we could sort of in exchange for, cause I mean, I want her to get her exposure if she, if exposure.
From what I understand, she wants to.
What about?
She wants to have that at the library at one o'clock, but she's gonna have, she's gonna have speakers before they even march. So they're gonna be doing their speaking before they go.
Okay.
So, um, you know, and and again, I I I am gonna talk with her tomorrow about what's going on and hopefully I can get that uh down a little bit on Chester Pike and come to a compromise and uh.
What about in front of the Falkcroft Diner? Like, that might be a little bit safer? If we're talking where she would still get exposure on Chester Pike. But at least it will be more of a safer area. I wonder if we could talk to the diner to see if that would be okay. I mean, I don't know, like where they can just come and like kind of march around there. And maybe one speaker could speak at the end there.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I don't want to disrupt a private enterprise either. I mean, if they're, you know what I mean? They're parking, they're they're usually packed. I don't want to hurt their business.
That's true. That's, that's true. I was just trying to think of a compromise. I know she wants to do like an exposure to Chester Pike, but I have to agree. A lot of it's all safety. And that's, you know, should be our biggest concern is making sure that she and the protesters are safe.
Well, I'll get back with her tomorrow and I'll talk to her and see what I can come up with.
Okay.
And go from there and then go from there is maybe I can, you know, talk to her because we are having a great dialogue back and forth. So uh ma- maybe, you know, see, we can come to a compromise and be like, listen, I want to get you on Chester Pike, but I want to make it a short period of time so you, so nobody gets hurt or injured. Um, and maybe we can come up with something.
Okay, that works for me.
Your concern, chief, and I don't know, this might be more of us than her, but you have the contact with her, is if she's going to have everybody meeting up at the library, um, can we make sure she has a plan for parking as far as like, is she gonna park at the fire hall? And if so, we probably need to make sure that's coordinated with the firehouse, that they're not using parking that maybe is needed by the firehouse.
They could probably, they could line up down Ashland Avenue too. Um, but during a weekday, you know, that could be.
That would be my only thing. If you're in contact with her, just make sure she has some way of letting um the people who are attending know where parking is okay and where it is not. Um.
No problem. I'll 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 get in touch with the firehouse tomorrow and see, see what, how they are with that date and go from there. I'll let you guys know.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to ask the solicitor a question. So we have someone who's gonna have a protest who has contacted the borough for safety to make sure that they're following everything. What is our avenue if people show up to disrupt that protest? Um, and the fact is, they didn't, they didn't reach out to the borough. They didn't do it the right way, but they want to be disruptors. What I don't want to see happen, and I'll be clear, I don't want this to turn into what happened in Ridley.
I don't either. Yeah.
And I know, I know that the communication is better uh here in Falkcroft. So if the communication is better, what can we do to kind of uh help them out along her venture?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, you guys have the power to, you know, limit the number of attendees or, you know, essentially tell somebody that is causing disruption or here's the big causing disruption to, you know, you can respectfully ask them to leave when it's on a public property, but you've kind of invited the free speech issue here by holding the protest, providing security for it. So I mean, they have a right to speak. They have a right to attend. If they get out of control and begin taking actions that would amount to some kind of criminal offense, then you can arrest them. But I mean, beyond that, that's all you can do. Um, once you've invited the form, you've kind of invite the good with the bad and you just hope that the bad doesn't uh, the bad doesn't show up.
Copy that.
Sorry about that, guys. I had a uh animal eruption. Um, my dogs were playing a little rough. Um, so yes, I I do agree with Jason. And so let me ask this, can we, we could permit the one group and not the other? I mean, is that like, I don't know, there's nothing we could do in in that regard?
You would have to permit them both, um, or at least allow the application to come in unless there's something that would violate the terms and conditions of the permit. Then no, you couldn't deny it to the opposition group.
Okay. All right. Jason, are you satisfied with the answer?
Absolutely not.
Okay, what did you want to?
Oh, listen, I know it's, Alex, I I know it's the law and I hear what you're saying, but um, you know, people should be rewarded for doing things correctly. And I just don't want and excuse my French, any shit showing up to try to uh turn this into some agenda they have that has nothing to do with Falkcroft. Non-residents that uh have some sort of acts of crime.
Again, you've invited an open public forum. You've said, come onto our grounds. We're going to provide police security and protection to allow you to express free speech. Cuts both ways unfortunately. So if you want to make the opposition group require a permit, then you would also do the pro group as well. I mean, make them go through the permit process. You find something that's not there that would cause a public health and safety violation, then there's your grounds to deny the permit. But other than that, you can't control, you know, from the onset.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay.
And I know you're right. Doesn't make me happy.
All right, all right. So uh, we've got that ironed out. Uh, so I'd like to move on. Chief, do you have anything else?
Uh, no, I do not.
Okay. All right, moving on to the solicitor's report.
Actually, I have nothing outside of uh kind of my footprints all over the ordinances today. So um, nothing.
Okay, very good. Moving on to uh the finance director's report.
Yeah, Joe, well, just one thing. We need to pass the um MMO uh two thousand twenty one financial requirements in a form of motion. Uh, we need to pass the the uh police pension plan, five hundred twenty four thousand seven hundred eighty two dollars. And then also the non-uniform plan of ten thousand and thirty one dollars.
Okay, and when does that need to be? Do we need to do that tonight?
Yeah, and then that'll get put on the, and.
You froze up there for, say that again, Joe. You froze, you're freezing up on me.
That'll be, that'll be, it'll be for two thousand twenty one uh budget.
Okay, so we need to do, we need to do it right now.
Yeah, approve it. Yeah, and it's it's required by law. You have to, it's state required. And then our actuary does the numbers for us. I mean, the police have five percent of their pay withheld and then they they calculate based on the actuary what our portion is. Uh, and then we'll, they will get state aid also in September.
All right. How much of of a of a budgetary increase is this for us or expenditure?
About a hundred grand, but I think we'll be okay with that. Um, I have a little cushion in there, but it went up about a hundred grand because our cops are making a little bit more money now. We have, we added another full-timer last year. Um, but it's, it's, it's still our pay.
Okay.
And then the non-uniform is, it's minimal what we put in.
All right. So how do I need to word this? We'll pass it tonight if we can.
Just, just um a motion to approve the two thousand twenty one financial requirement.
For the, you keep breaking up, Joe. You keep breaking up.
To me, I'll make the most.
Yeah, text it to Jason. Have, we'll have Jason or Rogue.
Okay, no problem.
I'll do it under new business, Mr. President.
Okay, very good. So we'll move on to, while just putting that together. Um, Borough Managers' Report, we'll take that in the interim.
Whoops. Uh, as I said previously, and I think that uh, I think we covered it sufficiently, but just if you have any questions, we've radically increased code enforcement. I don't know how many tickets we've written this year up to this point, but we've been writing probably twenty, twenty-five per day. I see Lee's smile. That makes me happy. Um, other than that, people are paying online. We're getting tons and tons of online payments for tickets, which I think is really, really efficient. We're not getting that many of them in the mail. They seem to be almost exclusively being paid online. But we're dropping most of those issues. If people call the borough and if anybody's listening and if it's something that they can fix and it's not a recurring issue, I am glad to discuss dropping it. The ticket uh is valuable, but more valuable is we're fixing the problem. So I'm desperately trying to engage with people and help them. I'd even be glad to help them fix the problem. So that's all I had to say for this meeting that wasn't covered.
So just on that note, Andrew, don't you get a report from Neil every week that has the tickets that were written? We were talking about that at a meeting.
No, I get a daily report that started last Friday, a week ago Friday.
Okay. All right. So Andrew, what I would like from you, if you can, is uh have a report for us every council meeting on what what's happened. All right, all right. And you could delegate that to to Neil if um, if he wants to prepare it for you or you could compile his weekly numbers or his daily numbers into your own report, but we, council would like to hear that. Uh, I would particularly like to hear that every meeting. So as far as being paid? What's uh, yeah, actually, Andrew, they, Andrew, they, they, they told me the other day that they're coming through the, so it's quite a few fines being paid through the electronic um venue or.
Yeah.
So Andrew, you pick up on that. You can.
Yeah, so we have the online system. I guess you may recall council motion to do uh, I don't know if it was the May meeting or April. I can't remember. It's been a hundred years since then, but um, they uh, so residents can now pay all fines, fees, things like that online. Um, you go onto the website and uh you also, you know, we were getting tons of old parking tickets, things like that being paid that way. So it's been really, really efficient.
That's good.
Yeah, it's been, it's, on the financial end, it's, the money's flowing in. It it does a good movement going to Jack Rabbit. Um, you know, it gives you, Andrew knows, it gives you a detailed sheet on each individual person who pays, ticket number, what it is, and then I just class it to the correct account. But we get our money much quicker and we're not chasing people.
All right, very good, very good. All right, um. Uh, do, Jason, do you have the, was that, did I hear that text come through on your, on your device? So you ready to make that motion for us?
I promise you, my device would never sound like whatever that noise was. So I like, and and Joe, if I say this wrong, look, you know, but I'd like to make a motion to make the minimum municipal obligation payment to the pension fund in the amount of five hundred twenty four thousand seven hundred eighty two dollars.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
And what, uh, wait, before, before that's seconded, withdraw that second, please. Withdrawn? Uh, could you, I'd like to um, to uh, I guess amend that to to specify that it's for the the um fiscal year twenty twenty one, correct?
That's right. That payment would be made uh by December of twenty twenty one.
Hey, can you give me the amount real quick?
I can. It's five hundred and twenty four thousand seven hundred and eighty two dollars. And that is for our police. And I have another one, but I'll wait till this motion's over.
All right, so uh, accepted seconds for that motion, the amended motion?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, I'd also like to make a motion to make the MMO payment for our, I believe it's our highway department, Joe.
Correct.
Based upon market value of assets in the amount of ten thousand thirty one dollars due December two thousand and twenty one.
Got it.
All right. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. So Joe, is that, is that sufficient?
Yeah, then I sent the forms over to Andrew last weekend. I might have got mixed up in the email, but uh, you just need to sign the two fours. If he needs new copies, I'll resend them. You just sign them, Joe, as chief uh administrative officer, then I just get them back to the actuary so they have them filed.
Okay. All right, Andrew, I'll be by tomorrow morning to sign those off.
Gotcha.
All right. So let me get back to my agenda here.
What was that noise?
What was, was it a door that opened in the background? I think my door just.
It's like fog. Forgive me.
All right. Uh, so you have the manager's report. So any old business, any old business? No? All right, I have some new business. So I'd like to motion to accept a proposal from Obermeyer um for Labor Council Services. Uh, motion to, yeah, for Labor Council Services.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I'd like to motion to spend up to eleven hundred dollars. I'd like to entertain a motion to spend up to eleven hundred dollars for an outdoor movie. Um, and the date is, as of yet to be determined.
Real quick, this is what we, just before we vote on it, this is what we discussed previously about this outdoor movie coming up at the end of August. Uh, this is the three hundred dollar uh extra, three hundred thirty dollar fee for the permit so that we can play the movie so that we don't have the FBI in Falkcroft. Sorry about that. Anyway, I should have been on the agenda, Lee. I should have told you, but it was last second.
All right, um, so moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Just discussing providing the equipment that we're not.
We are. We're still looking into it, Jason, but for this one, we're gonna go ahead and and rent uh this, this DJ, I guess is what it can be considered.
Hey, who is the second on that motion?
Uh, uh, I'm merely the one.
All right. So the motion is made and seconded. Jason, are you ready to proceed? You good with that?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Um, and I think uh, is there anything else under new business? No?
Well, I, I think, is there anything we as a borough could do to help those families out that were part of the fire last night?
Actually, I think that's a great idea. Um, how many, chief, if the police chief's still on the line, do you know how many families were displaced by this?
I don't think there was anybody really displaced except for the the homeowner um of seven twenty one. Um, she was uh renting a hotel prior to that hotel room. Um, other issues that we had was the carbon monoxide of getting them back inside the house to cause all the heavy smoke. Um, they did have, I stopped down there today to talk to the residents and basically talked to them about what's going on and whatever else. And they already had adjusters that had come out um and restoration uh people as well. So that's going on right now. Um, but they did, the fire department did put fans in to blow um the smoke out until that CO went down. Other, or the carbon monoxide went down, um indicators. And um, both houses on either side had a little bit of damage in the back. Um, but nothing as far as fire, but more of like smoke and uh just a slight bit of water, not a ton of water or damage as the house itself.
Okay. All right, Andrew, maybe somebody from the borough should get in touch with the families too to see if there's anything that they need that we can help them with.
Uh, Joe, just a reminder, we we actually did speak to them last night. Um, I do think it would be a good idea. You mentioned via text. I was, I think, busy that I was on ten different calls. Um, but that, that you guys should do a cleanup at the intersection of Windsor and Delmar. I think we should do that in a timely. But that, that you guys should do a cleanup at the intersection of Windsor and Delmar. I think we should do that in a timely fashion. I don't know if you guys want to put something together real fast. I could put out a post for residents to come join if you think there's enough refuse.
Um, I think, I think, you know, if a couple of council members want to get together tomorrow afternoon, meet me there with a trash bag. I think we could do it. I'm willing to go. I just need one other person to join me.
What time are you thinking, Joe?
What time's good for you? I gotta take my dad to a doctor's appointment tomorrow.
I have a doctor's appointment in Brumall at 1:30. So I probably, I'm going to say possibly between 3:00, 3:30?
That might work. That might work. I'll coordinate with you, uh, tonight. I'm going to just see what time I gotta be up and get him to the doctors tomorrow. And then I think that'll probably be, that'll probably work.
Unless you wanted to do like.
Can you drop me off?
Like 10:30. Yeah, we'll talk tonight and we'll figure that out because I'm off tomorrow. So I can help with that.
All right. Jason, what were you going to say?
I was saying if Lee's going to be in Brumall 1:30, if she could just drop me off at Salad Works when she gets back to Faukroft.
No, Lee will not be there. Lee also has a doctor's appointment. It's just a randomly doctor appointment day. That was Mindy who's going to be there, not me.
I was just going to say, Jason, that was me.
Oh, I don't have any video up right now. My phone's about to go dead. Okay.
And I don't even know where in Brumall Salad Works is.
I'm only kidding.
I couldn't help you out.
Enjoy.
Okay. All right. So, uh, all right. So we'll get over there tomorrow and I'll talk to you tonight, Mindy, with that, with more information.
Okay. Please try to call before the convention at 10.
All right. All right. Is there any, anything else to cover, folks? All right. So I think we've covered everything. I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Everybody have a great night.
Good night.
Good night, guys. Good seeing you.
Good night.
Aye.
Night, y'all.